All right, Mr. Mayor, if you would like to unmute your microphone. You are now live.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I will now call the Committee of the Whole Meeting of April 2, 2020 to order. I'll begin first by reading the ministerial order under which this meeting is constituted. Ministerial Order Number M 083, under the Emergency Program Act, RSBC 1996, C 111, Section 10, Ministerial Order M 083, published March 26, 2020, under the provincial state of emergency, declared on March 18, 2020, overrides the community charter and council procedure bylaw for this meeting. Section 3 waives the requirement to allow members of the public to attend an open meeting, and Section 6 allows all or part of a meeting to be by means of electronic or other communication facilities. This order is in place until the March 18, 2020 state of emergency is rescinded. It should be noted that we're encouraging as many of the public to participate in this meeting through this process. So, item 2, have the approval of the agenda, including late additions and deletions. 2.1, that the April 2, 2020 Committee of the Whole Agenda be adopted as it sits. Who will move?
Counselor Lori Hopful moves.
And who will second?
Counselor Weeb seconds.
Thank you. Got it right. Okay, I'll call the question. Those in favor? Those opposed?
Motion carries.
Okay. Item 3.1, adoption of the Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Staff recommends that March 12, 2020 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes be adopted as presented. Who will move?
Counselor Leach.
And who seconds?
Counselor Howe.
And I'll call the question. Those in favor? Those opposed?
Motion carries.
Carries. Thank you. Okay, we'll go on to item 4, reports and presentations of staff. Any questions for the staff regarding 4.1 tax rate discussions? I assume that that staff will give us a summary before we begin the questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you mute your microphone? Joni, can you please unmute your microphone? Joni, you are now live.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to try to keep this fairly short and sweet. I'm going to try and share my screen. That one. Oh. I lost everybody. Does everybody see that? Send it live. Yes. Thank you. So yeah, this is really a council show tonight. We've put together four different scenarios. Obviously, those aren't all of the options that are available if council chooses to go in a different direction. Just, oh. It just keeps sending my one page. Sorry. I'm trying to go to the next page. Thank you. Apparently, I'm not good at this IT stuff, which is a good thing. We have Jeremy and Kevin. So comparing to last year's property tax allocations, you can see that the residential class of property assessments takes up the largest portion of our tax revenue that we receive. Excuse me, the next largest is our Class 6, which is our business other class. They make up about just under 30% of our revenue. Finally, the utilities class, which is one that's a little bit different. We don't have full say in what we charge that class. It's based on a proportion of what we charge the business class. So changing the business class changes what we can charge the utility class. Option 1 for council to consider is the operating and the projects budget as we presented at the February 13 Committee of the Whole Meeting, that council tentatively supported at that time. This option includes, at council's request, a new exempt position. This is at a 3.34% increase in property taxes, and this includes the 9% increase in water and sewer rates that are set in our bylaws. So using this option, we're looking to make just under $2.2 million in municipal property tax revenue. You can see that on the top line of the draft budget. Providing all of these options, we would have a net surplus at year-end of approximately $280,000. This does not include any surplus in the general fund. General fund would have a zero balance at year-end. The water and sewer funds would both have surpluses, water at $85,000 and sewer at about $196,000. So again, we're trying to make just under $2.2 million in municipal tax revenue. This shows the breakdown of the increases amongst the different classes of, amongst the different taxation classes. You can see everybody would have a 3.81% increase. That's more than the 3.34 that I mentioned because of that utility class. There's rules and regulations about how much we can charge that class. That average single-family residents using this option would see an increase when you consider both their tax and utility bills. They would see an increase of about 5.1%, $118. Again, that's both taxes and utilities. The tax increase on that is about $22 for an average single-family residence. Beneath that, you can see the impact to an average business, about 6.1% or $254. Again, taxes and utilities included. So that's option 1. Option 2, again, the operating and projects budget that council has already supported on February 13. This does not include the new exempt position. It now has a 2.1% increase in property taxes and again, the 9% increase in utilities. And if I'm going too fast for anybody, just stick your hand up and I'll try and slow down. So for this option, we'd be looking to raise about $2.1 million again in municipal property tax. The net surplus at the end of the year would be about $308,000. This does have a surplus in the general fund, about $27,000. The water and sewer surpluses would remain the same as option 1, about $85,000 and about $196,000 respectively. The breakdown again of the change in municipal taxes amongst the classes. This would have a 2.36% increase over all of the classes, again, except for the utility class. And the impact to an average single-family residence, about $104, taxes and utilities. For a business, about $210, taxes and utilities. Option 3, the same operating budget, the same projects, no position, sorry, no new exempt position, a 2.1% increase in property taxes with no increase to the business class and no increase to our utilities. This would leave our utility fees at the same rate that we charged in 2019. So it's the same. We're looking for $2.1 million in municipal property tax. $196,000 would be the surplus at the end of the year. The general fund would still have about $27,000 surplus. The water and sewer fund surplus would go down though by charging less on our utility fees. So the water surplus would be about $20,000 and the sewer about $149,000. Changes over all the classes of properties. You can see the business class actually has almost a negative 1% change. This is trying to keep the average charge for a business at the exact same amount that it was last year. Unfortunately, we have two less properties in the business class this year. So that reduces what we would actually collect from the class. The rest of the classes would see a 4.08% average increase in, or sorry, increase in their municipal property taxes. So leaving the utility fees the same as they were in 2019, the average single-family residents would see an increase in their tax of about $25, 1.1% increase overall. And the average business would not see any increase over the 2019 amounts. Option 4, and this is the final one for me. Again, operating and projects are the same as the February 13 meeting. This does include the new exempt position. We're back to a 3.34% increase in property tax and again, a 0% increase in the utility rates over the 2019 rates. So just about $2.2 million in municipal property tax revenue. We'd see about $169,000 surplus at the end of the year. Again, this is back to a general fund surplus of zero. Water and sewer fund surplus would be the same as in option 3. So about $20,000 for water, about $149,000 for sewer. Again, the business class on this slide goes down slightly. That's to keep the average the same as 2019. The rest of the classes would see 6.31% increase. Again, with the exception of the utility class. So using option 4, the average single-family residents would see an increase in just their property taxes of about $47. This would be a 2% increase over what they paid last year in property tax and utilities. The average business, again, this has a zero increase in tax and a zero increase in utilities. There are a number of supports that are being made available, both through the federal and provincial governments. These are not all of the reliefs that are available, just a brief highlight of some of them. Support for individuals, the emergency benefit for workers. That would only apply to people that are losing their jobs because of COVID, that are being laid off because of COVID. But they have a new, sorry, I don't even have a, sorry, the Canada Emergency Response Benefit that is available even for unemployed people. And that's the one that's about a $2,000 a month benefit, and I believe it's for about three months. They've improved access to EI benefits. That's their new portal is supposed to open, I believe, on April 6. So some of those supports for individuals. Again, they have also released a number of supports for businesses. They are extending a lot of the filing and payment deadlines for many of the taxes, including the employer health tax, GST. There is going to be a reduction in the school tax charges that people will see on their tax bill from us that we collect for the provincial government. They're going to be reducing those rates for commercial properties. On the federal side, there's a number of reliefs that are coming for businesses as well. You've heard of the, they're providing some small businesses with wage subsidies, extending the work sharing program, deferring the sales tax remittance, things like that. Other topics that I, sorry, this is the last slide, Counselor Hopful, and then, so other topics that I do need some discussion from council on. We haven't sent out our utility bills. We would normally send those out last week. We have not sent them out at this time. Our bylaw does state that utility bills are due on June 3. So a number of decisions to be made. Whether we're going to increase the utility charges as laid out in the bylaws. Are we going to extend the due date, things along those lines? There is talk from the provincial government of extending the due date for property taxes. It has not come yet. I don't know for sure if it is coming. So another option that the district has, we are legislated through the community charter, sorry, to have a July 2 due date for our property taxes. However, we can adopt a bylaw that allows for different due dates. It can even be two due dates. So you could have one the end of July and one in September. So there is a little bit of flexibility around that, but that would require a bylaw to be put in place. Also, Revenue Anticipation Borrowing Bylaw. Depending on how long, if we do extend our property tax due date, we plan for most of that revenue to come late June, early July. If that's not the case, we may need to look at short-term borrowing. This is set up for municipalities to borrow up to 75% of their taxation revenue through the MFA in anticipation of their tax revenue coming through. So those are a couple of other discussions that council needs to have and provide some direction to staff on. So that's all I have. And I'll open it up to questions from council.
Thank you, Joni. If you can press Stop Sharing, please, in the bottom right of your screen. And Counselor Leach, if you could unmute your microphone, please.
Are we good?
So I participated in a webinar this afternoon, the Economic Response and Recovery. It was presented from the B.C. Economic Association. And a couple of things that they talked about, about economic recovery, that we should be looking at, or some options anyway, is potentially, A, the consideration of the extension for the utility payments, but also to potentially fast-track permits for subdivisions or building because that's going to stimulate the economy and get people working faster. So as I was thinking about this, one of the questions that came to mind was, if we do do this, who would do it? Because again, we are pretty staff limited right now. And so then I felt that that would fall under the new position if we so choose to continue on with this. And I originally had thought that option 3, no utility increase, no increase to businesses would be the best option right now for the community based on what we're dealing with. But after thinking about this and with feedback from you, I would be leaning towards option 4. So as presented, new position, no new business increase and no utilities increase. I'd like to hear what people think of that, or if they have questions.
Thank you, Counselor Leach, if you would mute your microphone. Is there another counselor or mayor who wish to add or ask a question? Counselor Hopful, if you will unmute your microphone, please. And just a moment. Counselor Hopful, we're going to come back to you. Mayor Bussie, would you unmute your microphone, please? And you are live while I go and figure out Counselor Hopful and Counselor Howe. Just a moment, please.
Does that mean I have to continue talking or speaking until you get back? Thank you. I am in agreement with Counselor Leach. And I like the idea, obviously, of subdivision fast-tracking, and we're right in the midst of it right now. But I sort of feel that we could, we could or should consider an option 5. And that is, 3 was my desire, but if we go to 5, I feel that we can take that position and take it out of surplus thereby making sure that option 3 looks after both our residents as well as the businesses. And at least that will do us for one year. And if better times and we have increased subdivision economic development, then we can claw back that bit of surplus in the near future or in the future. The other thing is, is that I feel we need a task force, and I'm in agreement with Counselor Leach in terms of economic recovery, let's say, from COVID-19, which came right after the forestry downturn that has impacted our community. And as I keep saying, it pains me when I drive by the yards with all those pieces of equipment that are not being used, which means jobs are not there and revenues not being made by our residents and people that are close by. I really feel strongly that I would like to concentrate efforts on economic recovery. And I feel that I would need to have both the CAO and our planner intimately involved in this as quickly as possible to see what we can gain. And obviously, our CFO has done an admirable job of putting this all together, especially highlighting and summarizing the various programs, both federally and provincially are available. And it's going to take a little bit of extra resource. So I just ask council to give the consideration. I think we can look at an option 5 from my perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you could please mute your microphone, and I believe we have Counselor Hopful back. Could you please unmute your microphone? Thank you, Counselor Hopful. You are now live.
Okay, through the mayor, Joni, I just had a question. The reduced school tax for commercial property, is that already implemented in this draft budget? Or that's just something that's
You are back live again, Counselor Hopful. Please continue.
Oh, okay. So that was my question, through the mayor to Joni. Is the reduced school tax for commercial properties, is that already implemented into the draft budget? Or is that something that's coming up as an option that the government is putting out?
Can unmute your microphone, Joni, and you are now live.
Through the mayor, the school tax as well as the other six taxes that we collect for other authorities, those are in and out, so they make no impact to our budget.
Did you have any questions, Counselor?
Yes, I do. I'm sorry. Can I also ask if, are we allowed to borrow against our reserves instead of taking a small loan? Can we borrow against our reserves? Is there any government initiative during this COVID-19 that would offer or allow that?
You are live.
Yes, we can borrow from reserves. We do also have our stabilization reserve, which is set up for a purpose such as this, for unanticipated events that occur. I think this would more than qualify. And at, oh, sorry, I've got the wrong year-end. I believe there's about $400,000 in that reserve fund.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mayor Bussie. I kind of got interrupted with what your proposal of number 5 was, or option 5. But I would like to see personally just a 0% increase in property tax and a 0 increase in utilities just because this is an unprecedented situation. I don't want to put people at risk. And, you know, we don't know how long this is going to go on. And I just feel that in light of this situation, we should just do zero across and just, I don't know. That's just my opinion.
Thank you, Counselor Hopful. If you can mute your microphone. Counselor Howe is next. If you can unmute your microphone, Counselor Howe. And you are live.
Okay, I agree with Counselor Hopful. I do think we need to take a lot of the burden off the taxpayers right now. I think a 0% increase could be the way to go because we don't know how long this is going to actually take. Knowing that we do have a stabilization reserves of $400,000 potentially, that will help us through it. But I am interested to know what kind of effects that has on, like your taxes, what kind of effect that would have on the plans that we have for this upcoming year and our projects. Also, along with that 0% increase, I would also like to see an extension to to the due date for property tax. I'm not sure that July is going to be far enough out. I'm hoping we can look like further out to fall, much further into fall. And and any penalties. If we could have those waived as well.
Just in terms of the penalties, we have no authority to waive penalties on property taxes. That's where the alternative tax scheme would come in. If we were to change the due dates, say, for example, and I'm just, these are just examples. If we had a due date of July 31 with a 5% penalty and then a further due date of September 15 with the remaining 5% penalty because there is a 10% penalty on unpaid property taxes. And that's not what we've set up, that's set up through the provincial government, and we have no authority to waive that.
Has there been any conversation on a provincial and federal level regarding waiving these or extending the due dates for the for the penalties?
Joni, you are live.
There has been, through a lot of the finance forums that we have available to us, there has been a lot of talk of extending the due date provincially. One that I heard was extending the due date right through to September 30. But that has not, there's been no verification on that. There's been no communication from the ministry on that. That's just, I want to say rumor. So no, there's been no communication.
Thank you, Joni. Mr. Mayor, would you unmute your microphone, please? And you're alive.
Okay, thank you. For purposes of clarity to Councillor Hopple, my option five was option three, no increase in taxes and that the position be taken out of surplus. It's only a half year right now, therefore, no burden on the taxpayer. We have to come out of this thing out of the gate fairly fast in order to protect, enhance, and look after our local businesses. And we really need some intensity. And I'm quite prepared to put an extreme amount of effort and energy into it, like I'm sure all you are. But we really need the two key staff members to get on, well, three, actually, our CFO as well, to get on board with it. So I'm full agreement, zero increase for both parties. But let's seriously look at using some of that surplus for that position so that we can gain some traction early on instead of sitting back and letting the wave come over us, just for clarity purposes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bussie. Does any other councillor have a question or a statement? Councillor Leach, can you please unmute your microphone? And this will be followed by a question from Councillor Weave.
Yes, thanks. So with the 0% increase across the board, what's that going to do to the projects as presented in the operation budget as presented?
Go ahead, Joni.
Through the mayor, so I'm just going to duck away here. So to be clear, the option three that I had laid out was a 0% increase in utility fees, but a 2.1% increase in property taxes. So I think the mayor was kind of right. It is a bit of an option five. We would be with a 2.1% increase in property taxes, we would still be able to do all of the projects and the service level requests that were considered at the February 13 meeting. Because the 0% increase in utilities affects the water and sewer funds. So it would only be water and sewer projects that it would affect. However, we have sufficient funds in our reserves as well as a sufficient surplus in those funds to still go ahead.
Councillor Leach, do you have a follow-up?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Weave, can you please unmute your microphone? You are now live.
Yes, I would like to propose that we go with the 0% increase on the utilities and 0% increase on the taxes. It's a really unpredictable time at the moment. And a lot of what the government is offering here, well, I shouldn't say a lot, but partial of what the government is offering here is deferring payments. It doesn't mean that when people get back to work that they are going to have this extra money that they didn't have to spend on insurance or on hydro. Those bills are still going to be there. They're just deferred. So whatever we can do, I think the district at this point needs to bite the bullet, give the taxpayers, residential and businesses a break this year because of the unprecedented virus. And yeah, and I would like to see the the due date for the utilities, the very first due date be the end of September, if that's possible to bump it back that far.
Thank you, Councillor Weave. Does anyone else have another question or a statement? Mayor Bussie, with nothing from many of the councillors, if you would unmute your microphone, you are now live.
Thank you. Thank you, councillors. We should give direction to staff in terms of how we're feeling about this. Not getting as much feedback, but maybe I missed something. I think we were all in agreement with, or we seem to be in agreement with option three. Or are we looking at a variant of option three in terms of no tax increase whatsoever? Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, there appears to be general consensus, and Councillor Howe would like to make a statement. Councillor Howe, if you would unmute your microphone? You're now live.
Okay. Having the point that Councillor Weave made regarding deferring versus we
Councillor Howe? Sorry, Councillor Howe, we've lost you for a moment. I've gone back to the mayor. We're just going to let your video catch up. Okay. Okay, now, Councillor Howe, if you can please unmute your microphone, we'll try that again. And you are now live.
Okay, I don't know where you lost me at, but I wanted to say that Councillor Weave is on to something here. The difference between taxpayer relief versus tax payment deferral, it's a huge difference and it can make the world for our taxpayer base when we come out of this. Because right now, most people don't have an income assumatively. So if we defer, it still means that the amounts owing over these next few months will become due as well as compiled with the so the previous months as well as the there's going to be a lot of backlog financially. And when speaking with my husband, I said, you know, it's like we're incurring a lot of debt right now. Because essentially, that's what we're doing. We're going to owe this money at some point. So is there an option? And I'd like to know more about what it could look like if we redo taxes as well as defer.
Thank you, Joni. You are now live.
Our stabilization reserve fund. Sorry, I'm scared to put another screen up here, so I'm just digging through the papers. Like I said, I believe it's approximately $400,000 in that stabilization reserve at the end of 2019. We were not budgeting to fund anything through that reserve. Sorry, it's actually just under $500,000. We were not budgeting to fund anything through that reserve. So I would typically never recommend reducing taxes. And I would hesitate to recommend that even in this scenario. We are still offering all of the same services, water, sewer, garbage, all of those essential services, as well as maintaining our parks and maintaining our irrigation, things like that. And we are also looking at a reduction in our revenues, both through the rec center, the campground. Those are both closed. We're looking at a reduction in our revenues. I would hesitate to recommend reducing property taxes. We could certainly, and I'm not saying that we can't, I just hesitate to recommend that. Certainly, a 0% increase in both taxes and utilities would reduce our anticipated revenue for the year, obviously. But that's what this stabilization reserve is for. And eventually, and this was in one of the forums or one of the webinars that I was in today, we are going to bounce back eventually, and we are going to be able to refund our reserves. I can't tell you how long that's going to be. It depends on how long this situation continues and how long we need to rely on our reserves to fund our operations. But we will come back. So understanding councils' wish to limit the impact on both our businesses and our residents, absolutely, we can look at a 0% for both property tax and utilities. We can absolutely look at extending the due dates for both our property taxes and utilities. There are a number of other options that we can look at as well. We currently have a seniors discount. Maybe we could make that an early payment discount so that it's available to everybody. So there's a number of different options to consider.
Thank you. Councillor Howe, did you have a follow-up?
No, that's fine. Thank you so much, Joni.
Thank you. Councillor Weave has a question. Councillor Weave, would you unmute your microphone? You are now live.
I'm curious if anybody knows if there was ever any other situations where you use your stabilization fund or reserves, so to speak, that maybe something will come from the government to enhance the financial position of small communities or rural communities?
Joni is now live.
Sorry, I don't really have an answer for that. It's possible, certainly. Just in 2019, we had a bonus gas tax payment that we weren't expecting. It's certainly possible. I would hate to be the provincial or federal governments right now because they can run into deficit. And that's going to take us years to crawl out of. Fortunately for us, we're not allowed.
Any other questions from anyone on council? Councillor Hopple, would you unmute your microphone, please? You are now live.
Through the mayor, Joni, I'm just wondering, like, if we were to put out our utility and our taxes, our invoices out, could we still put them out on the same date but just change the due date? You know, I mean, there's going to be lots of people that are on fixed income, like seniors or people that are still working that will want to pay their taxes at the same time. And if that's the case, then, you know, the district can still capture and use that revenue without having to borrow against our stabilization, you know? So I'm just wondering if we can put out the utility tax and the taxes at the same time. But again, just put a later date, a due date on it.
Through the mayor, sort of. We've already passed the time that we normally send out our utility bills. Like I said, that was last week approximately that we normally would send them out. But we can't send out utility bills or tax bills until we know what due date to put on them. With our property tax bills specifically, we order that paper and it comes with all of that information already on it. So I need to tell our supplier what dates to put on it. So there's, the decisions have to be made by council before we can go ahead and start sending out the billings. We can absolutely send them out earlier than later in the hopes that some people are able to pay them earlier, absolutely. And thankfully, we do also have a lot of our residents and businesses that are on the prepayment plan. So some of them have already paid their taxes and the utilities for the year. If we were to go with a 0% tax and utility increase, some of them will even end up with a credit on their, once the billing is done, they'll still have a credit because we were anticipating for an increase this year.
Thank you, Joni. Anyone from council? Councillor Hopple, was that a question or a thumbs up? Sorry, anyone else from council? Councillor Leach, would you please unmute your microphone? You are live.
Thanks. So what I'm hearing is that we're all in agreement for a 0% increase across the board and a due date extension on, sorry, my, the, a due date extension for the utilities and taxes. But we haven't actually discussed Mayor Bussie's suggestion on the new position coming out of surplus. I'm wondering if we can just go over that a bit.
Who would like to speak to this topic from council? Councillor Weave, if you would please unmute your microphone? You are live.
I'm kind of wondering if we want to pass the the tax by law due date and whatever needs to be done and then get on to that part.
Anyone from council? Councillor Hopple, would you unmute?
I would agree, yeah. So I can make a motion to have a 0% increase in taxes and a 0% increase in the utilities and have our invoices go out at the same time and a later date of, I don't know, September 30th?
Councillor Hopple, was that a due date of September 30th?
Yes.
Joni, is all of that possible by resolution or by law?
I want to say yes. The only concern I have, and because we haven't gotten any further information from the provincial government, the tax sale is legislated to happen the last Monday of every September. So if our tax due date is after that, I don't know how that affects the tax sale. I can certainly do some research on it. I know there are other communities that have a September 30th due date. So it's obviously possible somehow. I would just have to do some research on how that affects the tax sale.
Thank you, Joni. Councillor Hopple, would you unmute your microphone? And you are live.
Would it be easier just to make that date September 15th or August 31st? Or would it make it just easier to have it before the last Monday?
Go ahead, Joni.
If that's the desire of council, absolutely, on my side, it would be easier. It would save a little bit of time in research. But that's entirely up to council. September 15th is fine as far as the finance side goes. What I would ask is, is that the due date for the entire taxes? Some places have two due dates, so they have one earlier and then one later on in the year. So just to be clear that that is one due date instead of July 2nd, it would be September 15th.
Councillor Weave, is that a question? Can you unmute your microphone? And you are live.
Thank you. Through the mayor, which I keep forgetting to do, I'm okay with the September 15th due date. I'm just wondering, like, when you say the tax sale, like, that doesn't happen for the same year, does it? Like, isn't that, how far behind in your taxes do you have to be before they put the property up for sale?
Go ahead, Joni.
Thanks for the reminder through the mayor. Thanks for the reminder, through the mayor. So tax sale happens when your property is in a delinquent status, so that's three years of unpaid property taxes, and that's your current year taxes, which is where I am concerned because when do they become current year taxes if the due date is after? So I think it's just a little bit of wording more than anything. There's, like I say, other places do it, so there's obviously a way. I would just have to figure out how.
Councillor Weave, would you unmute? You're live.
Let's just save Joni some digging to find out how that goes. I would suggest that we just go with September 15th, 0-0, right across the board. I don't know if we need to amend Lori's motion or if we could just carry it forward, and that's it.
Through the mayor, I'm just going to cut in for a moment. Just a reminder that this is a committee of the whole resolution. It is a recommendation to council, and it can change at a council meeting. So if you still want to make the motion and then Joni does the research, we can bring it, staff can bring it back at the council meeting that this will be discussed at. Is there anyone from council who would like to speak? Mr. Mayor, if you would unmute your microphone? You're live.
I see Councillor Weave has some more to comment, but just to confirm then, there is no appetite for my suggestion that we do the 0-0-0 and the extra staff person out of surplus then. So I think staff has their direction in terms of bringing this to the next council meeting where we will table it and then discuss, right? Because we can't do a resolution at a committee of the whole. Am I right?
Mr. Mayor, you can make recommendations at a committee of the whole to council in a very similar form. It would take the form of a resolution. It's just not the same. It's a resolution of the committee. It's not a resolution of council.
Okay.
Did any of the other councils have anything to say? I'm going to start with Councillor Weave and then Councillor Leach. Councillor Weave, if you can unmute your microphone? You're now live.
Thank you. I did not want to make the assumption that we were putting off the recommendation of getting the exempt person from reserves or from other funding. I just thought we could deal with it after we dealt with the tax and the date. And I think for the sake of 15 days, that I would recommend that we set the date for September 15th instead of having our finance lady doing research to extend it another 15 days. It makes no sense to me.
Councillor Leach, would you unmute your microphone? You're live.
Thank you. So can I also bring forward a recommendation in addition to what's being proposed? Is that we also see the option of 0-0-0 with the exempt position coming out of surplus, just so we can see what that looks like? I really do strongly feel, especially, I said, after being in this meeting this afternoon, that we are going to need another hand on deck to help with the economic recovery, and I think that it's something we need to plan for.
Does anyone from council wish to speak or anyone from staff? Joni? You're live.
Through the mayor, to Councillor Leach, there wouldn't really be anything to present with that coming out of surplus. It wouldn't show anywhere on our financial plan or our financial, it would show in our financial statements at the end, but we have approximately $750,000 in our accumulated general surplus, which is where something such as this would come out of. Again, it wouldn't impact our financial plan because it's coming out of the accumulated surplus, not the annual surplus.
Councillor Leach has a question. Would you unmute your microphone? And you're live.
Thanks, Joni. Would it not affect our five-year financial plan, though, because it is a position and it would be ongoing forward in future years?
Go ahead, Joni.
Through the mayor, yes, it would. And the financial plan that went to council just after the public consultation, I believe it was, would have included that in the five-year plan. And I believe the discussion at the time, it was going to cost about $50,000 this year because we were going to start it in the end of April. And next year, I believe it was about $75,000 or $80,000 because it was a full year. So it was previously included in the five-year financial plan.
Anyone else from council? At the moment, there is a motion on the table that the committee of the whole recommends to council for a 0% tax increase, a 0% utilities increase, and that invoices go out on time and that a later due date of September 15th be adopted. Is that still on the table or would council like to consider this as direction to council? Go ahead, Joni.
Just to be clear again, the utility invoices can't go out at the normal time. That was last week.
Does council want to drop the motion and consider this as direction to staff? And staff will come back with options at either another committee of the whole or a council meeting? Joni, did you have something to add to that? I'm going to put, Councillor Hopple, could you unmute your microphone, please?
Hi. So I'd like that motion to stand.
We will have, Joni, the portion about the invoices, do we need to clarify that that is only for property tax?
Through the mayor, I'm not sure that there needs to be anything about the invoicing. We're going to send them out as soon as we're able to regardless of, well, of course, unless council said, no, don't send them out till August. But the intention is always to send them out as soon as we're able to give people additional time to pay, even in a normal year. That's sort of how we try and do it regardless.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Bussie, you had a question? If you'd unmute your microphone? You're now live.
No, I'm in agreement too. I mean, this is a direction to staff, let's put it that way, and I think it's clear 0-0-0. And the dates, which I've lost track of, but I'm sure that staff or Joni knows how to do that, but I think that's appropriate and I support that. Are we going to canvas vote or do we do an actual vote?
Mr. Mayor, it would be an actual vote. If you'll bear with me for just a moment, I am typing this out so everyone can see the same thing before they vote on it. So if we can just hold for a moment, please? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is this along the lines supposed to be considered? And Joni, is anything here incorrect? Joni, you may speak with this up on the monitor.
Utilities is spelled wrong, but perhaps the due date for both tax and utilities be changed to September 15th?
Thank you. Just a moment.
Due date.
If you would unmute your microphone, this will be, it will still be a vote. It's, again, not binding because it is just a recommendation to council, but it will be recorded as a vote of the committee of the whole.
Okay, thank you. I'd like each one of the councillors to review this and make comment. And you say we need a confirmed type vote, not a canvas.
Yeah, and at this time, we have a mover in Councillor Hopple. We do still require a second.
Okay, and who seconds?
That would be Councillor Weave.
All right. Discussion, please. Any discussion, changes, additions that any councillor wants to look at for this recommendation?
Councillor Howe, would you please unmute your microphone? Go ahead.
Just reviewing some of the notes I've been taking during the meeting, the revenue anticipation borrowing by law, do we have to mention anything about this borrowing by law?
Councillor Howe, could you please repeat the last part of your question?
Sorry. So now that we're pushing the due dates out, will we need to draw, will we need to access the revenue anticipation borrowing by law? And if so, is that something we should be adding to our, to our movement?
Go ahead, Joni.
Through the mayor, I would think that the district is in a position where we do have our own funds that we would be able to borrow against should the need arise. I wanted to bring that just to council's attention, that that is an option that is available for the district. But again, it does require a bylaw, so we would have to take that to a regular council meeting should it be required.
Thank you. Did anyone else from council have a question or a comment? Mayor Bussie, could you please unmute your microphone? Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. So I'll call the question those in favor. Those against?
Thank you. The motion carries.
Thank you, councillors. Good work.
You're now live.
Sorry, any more business we want to talk, discuss under item 4.1.
Councillor Hopple, would you unmute your microphone, please?
So just a question for clarification. Are we still going to bring back to the next council meeting the job, the third job position?
Mr. Denegar, would you please unmute your microphone? You're alive.
Well, thank you, yes. The direction that we've last received from council, from the previous committee of the whole meeting, was to continue with the presentation of that position. So given that council's directing that we do a 0% tax and utilities increase, that position would continue as planned but would come out of the stabilization reserve.
Thank you.
You're live.
Not to argue with our CAO, but we would actually take that out of accumulated surplus, not our stabilization reserve.
Thank you, Joni. Does anyone else have anything to say on this subject? Anything from our CAO before I go back to the mayor? Go ahead.
Thank you to the CFO. I'm glad we have a CFO. And I'd just like to thank all of council for having this fantastic discussion. I know it's hard times and a hard decision to make balancing, preparing for the recovery from this while also being mindful of the hard times that everyone is suffering under right now. So I appreciate the thoughtful discussion. Staff have struggled with this as well, but thank you very much for this, and we'll bring it back to a future council meeting for a final decision. That's all.
Thank you. Mayor Bussie, Councillor Hopple and Councillor Weave both have statements. Are you amendable? Councillor Hopple, would you turn on your microphone, please?
I just wanted to thank you, I just wanted to thank you guys for all the work you've done and getting me hooked up on this crazy system we got going here because I truly appreciate it, truly. Thank you, all of you.
Councillor Weave, if you would unmute your microphone, please? You're, you're live.
Through the mayor, I absolutely want to thank all of our staff for the way they've stepped up and what they're doing here, and I am sure by the end of this term, I will be virtually electronically savvy. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Before I go back to the mayor, I would ask that Councillor Weave not make promises that she can't keep. Mayor Bussie, if you would please unmute your microphone? Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, staff. I concur with the rest of council. We're very fortunate to have a good staff, and you guys have bent over backwards. Our whole staff has worked hard, and we will continue to work hard through this COVID-19. And I really appreciate the patience of the councillors in getting tuned up to become virtual, and I'm sure we'll do more of this, and I think this has worked out very well. I certainly hope that our community can get on board and be watching some of this. Are we live? Are we going to have this taped? And is the community able to see this in the future?
Mayor Bussie, this has been broadcasting live the whole time, and staff will be downloading a video of it and posting it to some service as soon as possible.
Great. Okay, councillors, you look just great out there, so you'll be proud. Yes, Councillor Weave?
Councillor Weave, if you would unmute your microphone, please?
I have done so. Thank you. Through the mayor, I would like to ask, when you say we are live, I had a couple of people ask me, okay, when you're live, where do we go to see this?
A link this morning was posted on the Facebook page. It was also posted on the news section of the website. It is a link that will take them to the Teams website where it will stream just as if they were watching YouTube. So it was posted on all of our electronic communication forums today. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, everyone, and we're looking at rise and report that the April 2nd, 2020 Committee of the Whole Meeting rise and report, who will so move?
It's Councillor Howe.
Who seconds?
Councillor Leach.
Call the question those in favor.
Motion carried.
Carried. Thank you all. Thank you very much. See you soon, unvirtually, I hope.